If I could have your attention, please, we'll try to get started. We're maybe a minute behind. Ms. Whitby, you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Gann.
Here.
And Height.
Present.
The Corum is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Baxter.
During the following, we just thank you for this day and the opportunity to gather, conduct the business of this city. Lord, we just pray that you'll find the decisions that we make pleasing in your eyes. We just ask continued blessing on all of our citizens and especially all those workers for North Little Rock. Lord, we just ask that you forgive us for we fail you for we asking things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come in.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Here.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Number two, do you want that read or by title only?
Title only, but there are some points in it that would be good to have read. Is there any chance we could just read it in part?
Okay.
Let's read the whole thing, it's only a page long.
No, but there's a lot of fiddly things, maybe just the date and the time on those.
Okay, so this is a letter from Mayor Joe A. Smith to Union Pacific Railroad, care of the Corporation Company in Little Rock. It's regarding crossing unlawful delay complaints. Dear serves, the City of North Little Rock has engaged in repeated attempts to resolve through informal complaints the continuous blocking of rail crossing number 433921F by standing trains for four periods of time that are unlawful pursuant to Arkansas Code 23121007B. And because of the efforts to resolve this issue and formally have been unsuccessful, this correspondence is sent as the city's formal written complaint in accordance with Arkansas Code. A non-exhaustive list was included, and it has a variety of minutes of times, January 15th, 91 minutes. Another example is March 3rd, 39 minutes, March 6th, 46 minutes, March 7th, 76 minutes, March 9th, 64 minutes. These were periods of time that the crossing was blocked. The crossing is located at West 13th Street and is vital crossing for our emergency response vehicles and for our citizens. The urgency of this situation has been exasperated by the closing of the wooden rail overpass one block north of 14th Street. The trains standing for extended periods of time are also impacting a grade crossing north of this intersection at West 18th Street, West 22nd Street, West 24th Street. At these locations, in addition to impeding emergency vehicles and causing citizen inconvenience, a serious safety situation is created. The stopped trains block the path of students walking to the nearby public high school, and the students are crossing between and under the cars of the train. I hope that a solution to the serious issue can be found quickly. I look forward to your reply. Sincerely, Mayor Joe A. Smith.
Thank you.
Other motion.
Accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
This is step number one in a pretty complicated system, but this starts the ball rolling, and then there's, we bring the Arkansas Highway Departments involved in it and so on and so forth. So, this is the first step of making an official complaint. Okay, Ms. Whitby, I think we're ready to go to unfinished business already. No presentations. I've got several people signed up for, to speak on legislation. They're both on condemnations, and so I will call you up at that particular point when we call that legislation. So, let's go on to unfinished business.
Oh 1927, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning a street railroad crossing on 14th Street over the Union Pacific Railroad in the City of North Little Rock, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a railroad crossing closure agreement, second reading.
Let me tell you what my intention is here. I'm gonna let it set another two weeks, and we'll read it the third time unless something happens in the next two weeks to vote on it. We cannot find a legitimate reason to make anything happen like we want it to. Looks like Legal has given me their opinion that the railroad owns that right-of-way, and we have no control. Chris tells me that it is in disrepair, it's dangerous to use, that it would never qualify for pedestrian walkway because it's not ADA accessible. And the only bright thing, I think, in our research here in the last couple of months has been that there is a chance that we could get a grant to install a pedestrian bridge over in that area, but Chris's ballpark is $600,000. And maybe there might be some Highway Department money that would be available, I don't know if it would be that much. But what I think I'm gonna ask you to do is let's go ahead. I don't want to make a $250,000 or a $500,000 mistake, because if we, if we don't do anything, then the railroad could probably abandon it and say it's yours. And then we would have to tear it down, cost of X, and we're not gonna give the $70,000 that the railroad has offered to pay us. So, I think the only prudent thing we can do financially would be the most sense, and then try to, continue to try to get some TAP funds from the feds and from RDOT to a year or so in the future to build a pedestrian bridge in that location. Ms. White.
I have a question. Imagine that we did tear it down and got the 70,000 or 75,000. That money, one of the rough plans I had seen for that, to do that, was almost like a little roundabout on the other, not a roundabout, a little dead-end situation on the other side of the railroad tracks from Main Street that would make it so cars could turn around or, you know, make it more safe to avoid that intersection. I'd seen some plans for that. It's very, it was very rough, but if we-
But if you're coming from Main Street, that road that veers off to the right would be your option there.
Right. Well, my question is, the 75,000 would be used for that and not necessarily going towards a pedestrian bridge if we did find a way.
That's correct.
So, that money wouldn't be able to be applied to that.
That's correct. Ms. Ross.
The last time I talked to Chris Wilburn, the city engineer, he was gonna, as far as the structural soundness of the bridge, for a pedestrian, not for auto, but for a pedestrian bridge, has he gotten that report back yet? Because the bridge does not have to be made ADA if the structure is sound, I mean, if it's sound and-
I don't, I don't think Chris wants to put his name on it, but we'll ask him, he's right here.
Let me tell you first, I've coordinated with both, Union Pacific and RDOT. If it becomes a walkway, a pedestrian walkway, it's no longer gonna be inspected by RDOT, and it will basically become ours. Union Pacific, it is their right-of-way. I think there is a potential that they may have the right to tear it down if they want. I don't know that they would, but as it stands right now, it's structurally deficient. And whether it's a pedestrian or vehicular, it's posted at three tons right now, which is just about the lowest posting I've ever seen on a bridge. There are, how this all got started is, we had an RDOT inspection, I went out and inspected it, I called in the head of the bridge maintenance, people with UP, we all got together, we all agreed that it had to be substantially improved, just to bring it back to three tons posted limit. And we were in the neighborhood, that is special construction, it's on UP right-of-way. We would normally have to use a contractor that they tend to use on those types of structures. We got an estimate, and we were working toward plans, and it was, you know, probably north of $300,000, just to bring it back to three tons. In addition, you were gonna have to inspect it every so often, and it was gonna be an ongoing maintenance thing, just to get it. I just don't feel like, it's lived its useful life, I believe, and we did then start looking at funding for putting in a pedestrian bridge, like the mayor talked about, and there is potential there for doing it. You would have to do some engineering to prove that you can lay it out with the houses and everything, making it ADA compliant. And it would be, TAP funds are usually 80, 20, so 20% would be funded by the city, and engineering would be furnished by the city, too.
I know that at one time, and this is years ago, this is for Councilmember White and myself also, that, you know, they'd looked at putting a bridge across, building a new bridge across. And I don't know any of the plans there, the amount or anything, so can we start on that right now? Because, I mean, I know the fire and police, they need that through affair there. We need that, and is there a possibility that the UP would put in some money to close off maybe two of those crossings, 13th Street? We would no longer need that 13th Street crossing if we had a bridge there.
Yeah. Years back, in 2001, roughly, there was a study done by my old firm, which I helped write, and it was basically putting in the at-grade crossing, I mean, a crossing over the railroad tracks, similar to McCain, I guess you could compare it to. And it was to make a kind of connection from Main Street all the way to Pike. And I believe, I believe back then we had some federal money, but the city chose not to do it. It is impactful, somewhat like McCain was. It would be impactful to some ownerships in that area. But that's a fairly costly, it'd be similar to, in terms of cost, it'd be similar to the McCain Bridge.
Well, that's something that we did, we started putting money back for McCain Bridge, and when it came time, we had the money to do it, so we definitely need to start looking at that. When these trains are sitting here, we're not getting any, you know, response from UP, we need to start looking at something.
I was in DC week before last, and I'm on that National Transportation Committee, and that was one of the biggest conversations that we had, that we're not the only cities having a problem with that grade crossings with the railroad. Lady outside of Chicago, I never got a chance to talk to her, but she's in a village, she's the mayor of a village outside of Chicago, and, you know, what kind of traffic, railroad traffic they have in Chicago, and they were all amen in there and everything else, but she's having no luck either. So, I don't know if it's gonna come to an end eventually nationwide, but, you know, we'll look at that, but when you see that line, I remember that, needless to say, I've been here since Moby Dick was a minnow, but that line was down 15th Street, and you're gonna take a whole lot of houses, so you're gonna have all the condemnation issues, you're gonna have to buy all those homes, all the way from Main to 15th to Pike Avenue, and that number back then was in the multi-millions, and now it'd be that times three. I'd be willing to bet in the last 20 years. So, we can certainly look at it, but, I mean, I think the most successful thing to do right now would be to work on this pedestrian bridge, see if we can get some RDOT money. I mean, I'd much rather see us do a, spend $200,000 or $300,000 on a pedestrian bridge than fix an old, an old, old bridge, as outlived as-
For over, probably over $300,000.
For $300,000, so-
So, have we looked at an at-grade crossing on 13th Street?
We are at an at-grade crossing on 13th.
We have an at-
I mean, well, what do you call it?
A grade separation.
Grade separation, there you go. Yes, have we looked at that?
No.
No.
Can we look at that?
Sure. Problem is, you know, think about it, how far back you have to go.
I understand, I-
That bridge would start about maybe Main Street, it may even go over-
I think that would, I think it would be problematic because the bi-duct ends right there at 13th, but it might be very tough geometrically, but-
Doesn't hurt to look at it.
Well, you know, everybody's available, Chris is available, Amy's available, I'm gonna give you guys two more weeks to wrestle with this, and I think I've made my mind up, but y'all could certainly talk me out of it if you came up with a better mousetrap. So, we'll call that again in two weeks and vote on it.
The TAP, TAP fund applications are due June.
June 3rd, I believe.
So, there's a possibility we could go ahead and apply now for them.
Yes, it's possible, yeah.
Okay, we'll hold that consent agenda. Anybody wanna pull one out of the consent agenda? Okay, how about a motion?
Second.
All in favor of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Emmanuel's not in the room, he's been a really great addition to our planning commission, I want to thank him for his service. And our innovation, how people are here, thank y'all for being here, you're doing a great job, keep up the good work. Okay, new business.
R 1954, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amended offer and acceptance with Bobby Brant and to purchase certain real property located at 3919 and 3929, or, I'm sorry, 3921 Pike Avenue.
You know, a quick explanation of that, Amy.
Yes, when the survey was done, when we did the original offer and acceptance, there was a misunderstanding about the size of the property that we thought we were buying and that Mr. Brant thought that he was selling. We thought we were buying more than he was willing to sell for the original 350,000, and it was a mistake by our surveyor, and so in discussions with him, he said, well, to sell that amount, then he would need an extra $6,000, which is still below the appraised value of the property.
How about a motion?
Come in.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
And next are your condemnations, how do you want to-
Okay, let me, I'm gonna call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on, let me list them all off, and then I know there's two of you out there that want to come up. 211 West 50, 47th, number 10, Rhodes Avenue, 1004 North G Street, 900 North G Street, 207 Mosley, 523 Flowers, and that's it. So, I know Sharon Bowers is here to talk about 900 North G. Is that correct? Ms. Bowers, are you here?
Yes, come to the microphone.
Okay, come to the microphone, please.
I was, I was coming to talk about, well, I had, I was gonna speak at the end of the meeting, too, but on, I, on 900 G Street, I just moved to the Dixie Edition area, and there's also some old abandoned houses on the street that I live on and which I have issues with, because the doors are being, the doors are left open in the abandoned homes, and there's a lot of people that's going in and out of the abandoned homes, and there's nobody that lives there.
Okay, and let's talk about this particular piece of property. This is public hearing on this property, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On this property, when you get ready, are they gonna tear it down? Is it-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when they tear, when they tear the house down, the land, can the community start with the, a garden, like a community, do a community garden on the-
Do you own this property?
No, sir, I don't. But the, whoever the owner is, is the property going to be vacant, just the land is gonna be vacant, are they gonna build another house there?
Well, it's entirely up to who owns it at that particular point in time. Once it's been condemned and torn down, then the price of the condemnation will be attached to the deed of the property. So, in order for them to sell that land, they would have to satisfy that lien. If they didn't do that, then the state of Arkansas would take over the property and sell it at public auction. So, it would depend on who bought it at that point in time. Am I right, counselor?
Basically, yes.
So, the land, so the land would just remain vacant?
Correct.
To keep the noise ordinance down on that street and everything that's going on with the vacant house on that, on that property?
If you ask me if it's gonna be torn down and stay vacant, the answer would be yes, unless somebody buys it, or until the state takes it over.
Right, because the present owner will still own the land, and so the, the city wouldn't have the ability at, at this point to give permission on land that somebody else owns to put a community garden there.
Because there's, there's a lot, even though-
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to rule you out of order.
Oh, okay.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Our, Tom Wadley is our code officer.
Yes, sir.
And he is here tonight.
Okay.
If you, Chief Bradley right behind you, we'll hook you up with him, and you can talk about anything you want to as far as that goes, okay?
Okay.
But tonight, we have to stay focused on our pieces of property here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, next I've got Sandra Cherry that wants to talk about 16, and that would be 523 Flowers. Are you here, Ms. Cherry?
Here I am, right here.
Okay.
Yes. I've done quite a bit of remodeling in my home on 523 Flowers Lane, and I plan to continue to remodel it. We've just finished, we've got a little bit left on completing the roof, but we had someone working on the roof a few months ago, and it rained in there and messed up the floor a little bit, and that's why it's taken us longer than it ordinarily would take us to finish doing what we need to do in there.
Okay, anybody got any questions, Ms. Ross?
The pictures that code, that come in our packet, they were from, I want to say March the 18th, and it doesn't show any improvement on that property.
Well, it is because the top part, we had to take it down because it had leaked in the house, and we had to take the roof, the top of the house and the inside down, and we had to put more materials up there because of the leakage. But right now, the roof is not leaking anymore, so we can do the work and don't have to worry about it. But in the beginning, people have been going inside the premise, stealing the materials and things that we had purchased, causing us to have different, different problems.
Yeah, this, this house has been under consideration for condemnation for a long time. I can't remember how, how long, but quite a long time.
Two or three years.
Yeah, two or three years. Let me, let me tell you, if you, if the council votes to condemn this house tonight, you have 30 days to get with our city attorney, and she can work up some sort of an agreement with you that you would put up, post a bond, and that you would agree to fix the house to where it would be pass code and be inhabitable. And if you forfeited that, then, if you didn't do it, then your bond would be forfeited to the city to tear it down. So, that's your options right now.
And you the one to talk to? Who I need to talk to?
City Attorney.
Okay, when I need to talk to you?
Tonight. During working hours, 8 to 4, Monday through Friday, at City Attorney's Office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go back, we've had our public hearing, I'm gonna close that public hearing. Let's go back to-
R 1955.
Yeah, please call it.
Mayor Smith, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 211 West 47th Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R 1856, Mayor Smith.
R 1956?
R 8, yes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 10 Rhodes Avenue in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Please for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R 1858, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 10 Rhodes Avenue in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Please for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R 1859, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 900 North G Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Please for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R 1959, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 207 Mosley Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Some move.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R 1960, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 523 Flowers Street in the City of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Comment.
I just want to make a comment on this piece of property, and I know that Ms. Cherry, you know, if she does want to, you know, bring this house up to code and everything, get it repaired, that she will put up the bond, but I will say, I have had more complaints on this one house than any house I've ever had on in 12 years.
I think I've had a few myself. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R 1961, Mayor Smith.
Call the public hearing, anyone here to speak on, um, cleanup lien on twenty-one oh four West Short Seventeenth Street? Saying none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Ordinances, oh nineteen thirty-three, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of an animal deterrent fence system for the Westgate Substation from Vanquish Fencing, Inc., first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes. How about a motion to adopt?
Motion for adoption, move, move.
Second.
Easy for me, y'all are saying.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for installation of an animal deterrent fence system for the Westgate Substation, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with A Dependable Fencing, Inc., first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Motion to, uh, adopt.
Second.
I just, Mr. Springer, I didn't get the chance to call him today, as far as any kind of warranty, as far as this keeping the animals out, is there a warranty on this, or?
Guarantee.
There are guarantees.
Guarantee, yeah, warranty.
No guarantee, but, uh, Entergy's had no animal issues whatsoever since they've started installing these type fences at their substations.
Have they had them for a long time now?
Uh, I would say probably a couple of years, we, we visited one, uh, Alexander, and that's the pictures I think you probably have there.
I forgot to bring the pictures, Scott gave me pictures to give to you all, I apologize. It looks really nice, though.
Alright, I was just curious, thank you.
Sorry, Scott.
You know, we had one outers down there, they had to shut the arena, uh, early when it was an ice skating event, and they couldn't keep their ice frozen, and when the hotel had a, a big four hundred and fifty people event there, and we had, had that same problem, so we needed to kinda stop that, so. On the motion.
Ross?
Questions, comments?
I was just gonna say that I had contacted, uh, Scott, because I wondered what kind of animals we were talking about, I didn't know, and it was raccoons, is that the only one, only kind?
Thanks.
Squirrels? Possums? Yeah. Yes, I was just, I was just interested.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes. On the motion to adopt?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes. How about a motion to adopt?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes. How about a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second. This is almost underneath the viaduct.
It's under the bridge, I had to go down there and find it.
What's a tow lot?
Mr. Clausen's here, if you have any questions.
Well, I had to look, I had to look it up twice, uh, will they, will, uh, will they actually let you park cars underneath the bridge?
Well, it's not under the bridge, it's just, you gotta go, you've gotta go down there.
The back of the, the back of the lot is the back of the bridge, Main Street Bridge, so, um, you actually have to enter a property off of Propeller, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a weird address for that property, but.
It, it really is, so, we love telling everybody we're at twelve hundred Main Street, 'cause I mean.
For them to get lost.
We, we, we really do, we're actually repossession, I'm a very small repossession company, I mean, it's not like we have a gazillion cars coming in or out, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Where are we?
Motion to second to adopt?
Adopt is called, roll.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Conditional use for property located at twenty-three, twenty-three East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. Motion?
So move. Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Oh nineteen forty-two Mayor Smith.
On the motion. Call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance eighty-three ninety-six to revoke a conditional use for a certain real property located at forty-two twenty East McCain Boulevard. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Bless you.
Oh nineteen forty-three Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance eighty-four forty-eight to revoke a conditional use for certain real property located at forty-one oh eight MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move to suspend the reading.
Second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Oh nineteen forty-four Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance repealing ordinance eighty-four fifty-one to revoke a conditional use for certain real property located at forty-six oh seven East Broadway Street, Suite B, in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. Motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Oh nineteen forty-five Mayor Smith.
Let it be known that you did that one in thirty-nine point nine-two seconds.
Now, so I've got that time to beat, right?
Are you ready?
Um, oh nineteen forty-five, you ready?
Call it please.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number eighty-four sixty-three to revoke a conditional use for property located on the northwest end of Michaela Drive in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
First reading.
Suspend the readings.
On the, second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Who concludes new business?
Thirty-eight.
Well, a couple of them slowed me down.
Ross.
All right, that's all we got, we're holding that one, okay. Let me stop that, let me reset that. Okay, we're gonna go into the public comment section now. We've got quite a few. Uh, the rules are that you, uh, state your name and address and, um, uh, also, um, you have three minutes. And I've got the little old timer up here and I'll wave at you when your time's up. Ms. Bowers, you're signed up to speak, do you wanna speak again, or would you just prefer to talk to Code Officer Wadley? Come on up, you got three minutes. Thank you, it's good to see you, glad you're here, being, being a part of the world.
Yes, sir. My first, my first, um, thing that I wanted to bring, uh, is about, um, on Sam Evans, on Sam in the front of the, well, my name is Sharon Bowers, I'm sorry. And I live at ten-ten F Street in Dixie Edition. And I wanted to, uh, the first thing I wanted to bring was a speed, I was asking, I was gonna ask, uh, for a speed bump on C Street and on the street coming down Sam Evans Street. Because the buses come down towards that area and the kids get off on some of, most of the kids get off on Sam Evans Street. And, um, most of the people that ride down through Sam Evans Street, uh, I don't know the speed limit down towards that way, but I, I think there is, is in great need for a speed bump right there. Especially in the area where the playground is on C Street, where the kids play in the, in the park area right there. I think that there should be a speed bump right there because if a child is playing in the park area and a ball rolls into the middle of the street and a car is coming, they may not see that child. And there is no sign right there saying that children at play. And I know the buses that comes down in the community area that's supposed to be driving down the street is supposed to drive fifteen miles per hour. Because I, I drove the school bus before, so, but most of them probably driving twenty-five miles per hour, thirty-five miles per hour.
We have a process to, uh, to apply for a speed bump. If you call our traffic department, they'll tell you how to do that. And, uh, our chief of police is here right now and he's taking notes and we'll try to get a radar over there and throw a few tickets at people.
Okay, um, the second one is on the same street, um, and I think it's nine, it's on the right. And there is, it's a recent house that just burned on F Street. And I don't know, I think it's like nine-ten or nine, I, I was trying to write down the address, but it's an old abandoned house. And, um, it recently caught on fire. I've seen several people going in and out of that building. I, I, when I come out, I, I normally walk down towards that street, but my concern is there's a lot of children that's walking down on that street. And there's a lot of grownups that's going in and out of that house, I don't know. And I was just asking the city, is it gonna be torn down because someone, it, someone went in there and it, it caught on fire or whatever?
It, I'm sure we know all about it and I'm sure our people on top of it.
Okay. And, uh, the next thing that, uh...
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting. Okay, let's see, Jesse Klingman.
I wanted to meet you anyway.
Well, I'm glad you're here.
All right, my name is Jesse Klingman. I really was concerned about the potholes. Is there any ingredient that, I don't know, they feel them, but when it rains, it's coming right up. And I have hit a, a quite a few and blowed out a tire, a guy got hurt not too long ago with the, with the pothole holes. And I would like to see them, see them fixed. I would really like to see them fixed, it's a lot of them over in Rose City area. I mean, Vic was, she going into Dixie that she didn't mention there about a, about shotgun damn, you have to come this side.
I'm, you know, we, we have a list. You know, this, this winter's been real brutal on, not only us, but, but most every city. And, uh, we're on top of it. The, if you see a pothole, one of those, call our street department or go to our report and repair hotline.
Okay, one more before my three minutes up.
Turn it up.
The, the legal gambling.
What?
The gambling in the Rose City area. Are these are illegal, it's not illegal like Hot Springs, they all in the Rose City area.
Oh, I'm, tell where are we, are those little slot machines are putting in these C stores? The ABCs investigating them.
That, that's my understanding is that the ABC enforces that and that, um, the city's been in contact with them. I don't know what the status is as far as it being with the ABC, but we can check. Do you know, Diane?
Are they legal?
According to the state law, they are not.
Okay.
But there are some issues.
Can we get that in writing that they are not?
Um, and that's in state law, um, but it's, it's an...
We're on it, we don't like it either, we're on it, but, but it's a state law, it's regulated by the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. So we are turning all that over to the state and telling them where the complaints are.
Thank you.
We're watching it.
And then, um, Chief Davis does have a list of locations he received tonight, cause he spoke with some of the folks and...
Calling those potholes.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Okay. I'll make one more comment on potholes is that, in, when it's winter and all we can do is, is patch a pothole with cold asphalt. And, um, so those don't last very long. Uh, but once the weather gets like it is this week, we'll start po, we'll start patching those with, with, uh, hot asphalt. So bear with us during the winter months. Okay, uh, let's see. Corwin Haddison.
My name is Corwin Haddison. I live twenty-six hundred West Persian. My concern was what she was talking about. Now, those machines that they have in those convenience stores, the guy named Sam, I'm pretty sure North Little Rock familiar with him, cause they got them all across from the police service station. He stay open twenty-four hours. Other word, they got a gambling casino. I just gave him all the address, all the addresses wrapped together. They got like a little strip line. And one of the guys, Sam, he told me, said, he's legal to operate. He said, I pay to operate. Now, those were his exact words, that he paid to operate. Now, I don't know, I, I talked to the gambling commission, you know what they told me? They said, what district? I said, North Little Rock. He said, well, North Little Rock's supposed to hammer that. That's what the gambling commission told me. They told me that that's North Little Rock, yeah. He said, that's over in their district. Well, then they, they, they supposed to stop that gambling going on down there. So I don't know about what y'all saying about the gambling commission, cause I done called more than them. I don't, they called, I called the prosecutor attorney and I asked her, I said, ma'am, do you mind if I ask you a question? I said, you know them little gambling machine they have in Hot Springs and everywhere? Is it legal for them to have them in them convenience store? You know what she told me? I don't know. Now, you gonna be a prosecutor attorney and you don't know what's legal and what's not legal?
Good point.
Mm-mm.
We're as confused as you are, I'm sure.
And Mayor?
And I went in Bruce, Bruce been busted once. I went in Bruce Hill, when you walk in the door, they lined upside the wall. I went in there one day, the little kid in there, come on, get that money out of there, get that money out of there. I said, boy, get away from that machine.
I, I fail your plan.
Nobody, nobody, nobody concerned. I don't mean no harm, but years ago, Rose City was, at one time, was run to all white mode. They didn't have that down there, Mr. Kim, no Chinese, Japanese, none of them that stole within there. But now, since it's almost as black as, um, they done move all down in there, they done made a script with casinos, operating twenty-four hours, nobody concerned. And I seen the police park over there on the lot, instead of them going in there, they chase the cars, pulling up behind people. And they got a legal gambling factory going right there before. The reason I know, I been in there, I played. And they give you money cash. And, and that's tax evasion. They ain't paying no taxes. He told me, Sam, I pay taxes, I just wanna get me a baby too for them, so...
Mayor, if, if he would contact the State Alcohol Beverage Control Board, we, Councilmember Robinson and police officers and members of the Alcohol Beverage and Control Board had a meeting.
Well, they can't, cause Sam gave up his beer life.
He did.
He gave up his beer life.
If you would contact the Alcohol Beverage and Control Board and tell them you have played there and received money, that's what they need is witnesses.
And they pay anybody, I mean, they could send anybody in there.
I bet, I bet they wouldn't pay me if I went in there, would they?
Yes, they would, all you do, put some hat on your head and say they would know if you Joe Smith or Mayor North Little Rock about. Only thing they want you to do is put that money in that slot machine, they'll take anybody's money.
Thank you, we're, I assure you, we're, we're working on it best we can. Thank you.
I didn't get that address, did he say twenty-six hundred West Persian?
Yes.
Twenty-six hundred West Persian, okay.
That's where he lives. He has the address for all the machines.
Uh, well, I was gonna send it to his house.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Haddison. Bobby Taylor.
Got trouble here in Rose City.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. Mayor, I wanna run something past you here, it's, uh, on these recycle bins and garbage cans. You'd have to go out there to see the amazing work that this lady has done. And she's come down with some health issues and she can't do it no more. I don't wanna receive her replaced. I'd like to see somebody take over for a little while, because she's the best that we've ever had out there.
You tell them that sanitation code officer?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, she's, she's, she's been a great asset.
With Harold Ford.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm saying that I'd like to thank him too for the job that he does out there on the cleaning up.
Great, thank you.
Now then, I wanna talk to you about Central Arkansas Water. About a, little over a year ago, they come put a new meter in front of my house, forty-six oh nine Boer. They dug a hole out there in the street, or somebody did, and put this new meter in. And ever since then, I've had to bust up rocks, bricks, whatever I could get to fill up this hole. They come out there and put a sack of something in it, it looked like concrete, it's a gray sack, I can see it. But last Thursday, I put twelve or fourteen concrete brick, busted them up in little pieces and poked them in there and packed them down. First time it comes a good rain, then will be gone and I'll have to do it again. I have to do it about four or five times a year. Every time it comes a good rain, somebody like the mailman or the water meter's gonna fall in that hole and y'all gonna have to throw him a rope. I don't even go around it except from the street, I don't go in the yard because it's soft. Now then, I wanna move over to the shop where I had a water leak. It been leaking for over a month. And it was between my meter and the street. I thought maybe it might've just been rainwater because we've had a lot of water. But it wasn't, cause I went out there one day and took the meter top off and, uh, the hole was full of water, so I dipped all the water out of it. And it wasn't my meter, it was between my meter and the street. So I called the water company and, uh, two or three days went by, didn't see nobody. So I called back and talked to the lady and she said, well, hey, you just turned that in a couple of days. I said, yes, ma'am, I did. And I said, this water's coming in this meter right through in front of my shop and running right in the front door of my business, this is not at the house, this is at the shop. And these people that comes and picks up cars and bringing material and stuff like that, had to wade mud to get into the shop. This went on for a month before they fixed it. Now then, I called them back, this has been probably, uh, it's been fixed probably about a month and I called them back. Went there one morning after they got through with it, went in there, my bathroom was flooded, that's where the backflow flush, backflow system is at. And it was, it's leaking. And I called them and the lady said, well, hold on a minute. So she talked to somebody in Mall Mel and she come back on the phone. She said, there's a guy in Mall Mel, she gave me his name and told me, she said, he'll be getting in touch with you. It's been almost a month and I ain't heard from him and I've got this, uh, funnel under this thing popped outside where the water will drip out of it. And I guess I'm gonna have to call my man that works on that backflow and get him to fix it and pay for it myself. But if these people like this, Arkansas Central Water, if this is the kind of service that they've been giving me for the last year or so in and over their shop, Mayor, you got a poor excuse for a bunch of people that... It serves the city for the water and it pays their salary. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bobby. Just whip you, remind me in the morning to call C A W. John Santoro.
Long time no see, John Santoro, one-three-zero-zero-six, Willow Beach. Apparently it's all been running good, so I had been up there. Bobby didn't tell y'all, but he just had a surprise eightieth birthday party, so...
Oh, happy birthday, Bobby.
Happy birthday.
Today's birthday?
I, I've got a couple things that, um, I need to cover, I didn't know, I don't wanna go over my alderman, cause I got two great aldermen. But there's some issues out there, I don't know who we need to contact or if you guys can help us. It's the, on three-ninety-one, one-sixty-five, that's coming out of Stone Links, one-sixty-five. Is there a way to get a red light there? The traffic is getting pretty busy out east and we wanna know what we can do about getting a, a, a traffic light there and I don't know, Maurice, have you checked on it or...
We, we had a traffic study done and they're, they're not biting. Highway Department says no.
Bay Highway Department, yeah.
I talked to Roger Lynch too and he said he was gonna check on it too. Also, with, uh, I don't know if we had any weight on it or not, but I actually talked to Robert Voels years ago about a turn lane in all the businesses. And he says, when they built that road out there, they made it with turn lanes accessible where they wouldn't have to do red lights. Is that something in the plans also to put turn lanes in all those businesses out there, like the gas stations and so forth?
If, if I remember the study correctly, they, uh, they will consider turn lanes, um, and, and another issue that, that, uh, Councilmember Robinson and myself, we, we talked to the mayor's office about possibly slowing the traffic down. At least from, uh, three-ninety-one up to four-forty, because fifty-five just doesn't work through there, it's just, you, you can't turn out and... There was an accident out there the other night, man, it had traffic backed up for hours, so...
I agree. And I know they, uh, I know there's been a study done on, at the fire station too, by getting at least a flashing light there that would help them get it out there.
Yeah, that's coming.
Okay.
Yep.
Good deal.
Yeah, that's coming and, and it'll also have a, uh, a warning indicator, uh, before, on, on east side to let, to, to, uh, let traffic know that that light has changed.
Good deal.
Yep.
That's it, I appreciate it.
Okay, John, thank you. Charles Witcher.
Everybody, how y'all doing? My name's Charles Witcher, I stay at eleven-nineteen West Seventh Street. Um, I'm actually here about some, two big trees that's dead. They constantly falling, I don't want them to fall on my house, they directly across from seven-oh-seven Parker. I've got with Ms. Linda Robinson several times, think I even talked to Mr. Taylor one time, I sent trees out, I mean, I sent pictures out of the trees. They got real bad termite damage, my house had termite damage, I had to redo a lot of the stuff in the house. I have six kids and I don't want nothing to happen to my kids or the neighbors, I want something to be done about it.
We agree. Eleven-nineteen West Seventh Street, Chief.
Seven-oh-seven.
Yeah, they, they are directly across from seven-oh-seven, but I stay at eleven-nineteen.
Seven-oh-seven what?
Seven-oh-seven Parker.
Parker.
Yes, sir.
Seventh and Parker Tree.
Three of them right there on the road.
Like, they falling like every day.
The limbs are...
Yeah, there's a bunch of really old trees down there, we'll, we'll go look at it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witcher.
I'm a block away from it, I'll look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, do. Give me a report on it.
Uh, Jimmy Arden.
You save the best for the last?
Almost.
Ms. Whitby, would you come down here, please?
Um, okay.
This is for your horse, take that to him. I told you I was gonna do it. He has a card in there and two red apples. You're welcome. You're welcome. Now, I'd like for y'all to think about something. Waste management has stopped, will stop picking up glass. If I understand correctly through sources, they wanna go up on what rates and quit picking up some stuff? And I'm serious about this question, I know we're not supposed to ask questions, but I'm serious about this thought. Why don't we look for someone else to do waste management? They, you'd be surprised what they're still doing. I think you already know, Mayor, you know how much trouble Harold's having. But there's no sense in it, the only thing I give them good credit for, because I'm not able to put mine out, they will if I leave it outside the fence. They will come and get it and bring it back. But if I forget to put it back inside the fence, code could come by. But seriously, each one of y'all look at another way of doing waste management. Now, my one fuzzy for today, thanks to the fire department that come got me up out of the flower bed when I fell. And thanks to me, um, that rushed me to the hospital when they thought I was having a stroke. Y'all have a good day.
We're glad you're well, Jimmy.
I'm not a hundred percent yet.
Uh, Nick Frankie.
All right, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members. I'm here again about the airport and, uh, I just see that the, uh, agenda, the minutes were certified where the mayor said that the airport got fifty thousand dollars, reported fifty thousand dollars of income. I've looked over the past five years of, uh, budgets from the North Little Rock Airport and from the city of Little Rock, I'm not seeing that fifty thousand dollar carryover anywhere. But I did see this year again, line item zero-nine dash zero-zero-zero dash four-six-five-five-zero, one hundred thousand dollars again going to the airport. Uh, I'm not sure why the airport couldn't use this fifty thousand dollars to get their, uh, plans together so they could go to, uh, Mr. Chisholm for their new hangar and their new ramp. Why we have to give him ten thousand dollars, where this fifty thousand dollars went? Where this $50,000 went? And I'm not, I seen where Mr. Clay Rogers is quoted in the Cabot Leader. In fact, there are two hangars sitting on dirt who would want to park their $60 million Falcon jet on dirt floors. That's a direct quote from Mr. Rogers. If there are two hangars out there that are top of the line, this is not just the poor man's Falcon jet, that $60 million top of the line Falcon jet, we got two hangars out there that'll fit a top of the line Falcon jet on dirt floors? And they're not spending that $50,000 to fix that floor? I mean, I don't hardly believe that. But maybe some, we could look to other cities like Harrison. When up there, Maverick and Oakley could purchase a new floor and put these hangars and use them, like Harrison is doing with their hangars. You know, doing some lease agreement, working out. Everett, down in Sleen County, and Crane, who built their hangars? They did. Bryant didn't build their hangars. Who built the corporate hangars in Hot Springs? The corporate owners built those hangars. Who's built corporate hangars in North Little Rock? The people, the taxpayers of North Little Rock don't understand why that is. Our airport is being mismanaged. And I'd like to end on infrastructure improvement is always good, but just like the highways and the highway tax, let those who use it maintain and improve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Deersaw.
Thank you, Mayor, member of City Council Lynn Deersaw, President of International Association of Firefighters, North Little Rock Chapter. Mayor, me and all of our members of the local are in receipt of your letter late this afternoon. I've only had about 30, 45 minutes to go over it for the meeting, and brings up more questions about our salaries and staffing in response to our response. We would like to sit down with you at least one more time and try to work out these differences. I would like to try to invite any of the city council members to join in that might be interested. We could, next couple of weeks, we could all meet here one afternoon and sit down and go over the contract article for article, just for transparency's sake. I think you made several points in this letter this afternoon that are inaccurate, and we'd just like to try to move forward, best way we can. Most of the firefighters feel like that we're being treated like second-rate employees by most of the uniform and non-uniform employees, you know, having better benefits than we got. All we're asking for is just to keep what, try to keep what we've got for the last several decades, and then maybe, you know, bring us up to what the other city employees are getting, you know, specifically in sick leave and vacation accrual, things like that, overtime cycle. You know, we were on a seven-day overtime cycle, you know, and we got moved to a 28-day cycle, which drastically reduces our overtime pay whenever we work it. And right now, by being moved to a 28-day cycle from a seven-day cycle, you know, sometimes it's four to five weeks before guys and girls are, you know, being paid for their overtime. I mean, I don't think that's reasonable to have to wait, you know, four or five weeks after you work overtime to wait, get your pay when everybody else gets theirs in a seven-day cycle, like on the next pay period. I know there's several different things that we need, still need to work through and discuss, and we're ready to do that.
Okay, Lynn.
And I think rather than go to an impasse or ask for a mediator to come in, we just involve all the city council members if they're interested. We can meet down here, we can set a table up with chairs, and y'all can sit in your chairs, and we can hammer something out.
Okay. Press is gonna be there, too.
Yeah, they'll have to be.
Absolutely. You sure you want that?
Uh, don't have it.
You want to negotiate this in front of, we'll even turn the cameras on. How's that?
Fine with us.
Okay.
Can the citizens come?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, you can watch it on TV. I think you need to talk to your people, Lynn, because I don't think you want to do that. I'm just giving you my advice. I really don't think you want to do that. You got a bunch of great guys and girls that work out there, and I don't think that you want to get in a contest like that, because I think you'll lose.
Well, I mean...
I don't want you to lose over a bunch of little stuff that you guys are nitpicking at. Every time we get together, you bring five more things for me to change or approve. I'm about done.
Right. Well, I mean, if you'll think back to November, Mayor, end of last year, we only had two issues. You said right here, it's on video. You told the city council members that we only had two issues.
Absolutely.
And so, we meet with you to try to work out those two issues, and you insist on going over the whole contract. And between meetings, while we're having to go over the whole contract, we're doing further research. We're finding out that uniform and non-uniform employees have unlimited accrual sick leave, and we're stuck at 90.
It's a state law.
Understand that.
Go change it, it's state.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we can go above and beyond that.
Yeah, I think you're heading down a dead-end road, but I'm about done. You know, you point, give me, give me and a written response on some of the things that you think. I'm not changing anything that I sent you the other day. I sent it to all the firefighters. I talked to numerous firefighters that didn't have a clue.
Yeah, I know. Our Facebook, our members-only Facebook page is blowing up tonight.
They didn't have a clue what y'all were doing and what you were negotiating. That's why we sent that letter to each and every one of them.
That's right. And that's, we were following our bylaws of our union. Once the original proposals are presented to our membership, the negotiating committee doesn't have to start taking every proposal back to the membership every time.
Well, they didn't even have, they didn't even get summaries. So, I sent that letter to all of them.
Absolutely, we do summaries at every union meeting that we have every month.
I'm not going to argue with you. You know, we'll just reach a point where we just can't go any further, and we'll cry uncle. I mean, I think I've been very fair. I think I've been more than fair.
Well, I know you keep, I know you keep saying that, but...
Well, you want all the good stuff that all the other guys have, but you don't want any of the bad stuff. You know, I mean, you know, there's not a soul, not a policeman, not a non-uniform that gets food allowance, and you do. You don't want to give that up.
That's right. And they also get unlimited sick leave accrual.
Yeah, we don't want to get into your sick leave. There's not a department...
Ready.
You...
Or ready to get into all of it.
You abuse your sick leave more than anybody. You're three times more than any other department in the city.
That's because we deal with sick people every day. We go into their houses.
You just know how to work.
We have to put on hazmat suits.
39,000 hours of sick leave is what y'all had last year. 39,000. That averages out to be one month per firefighter.
Right, right.
One month per firefighter.
And five years ago, we sat down with you the first time after you got elected, and I sat, we sat right there in your conference room with Chief Malden, and I specifically asked him in front of you, how many sick leave abusers does the fire department have in your estimation right now? Do you remember how many he said?
No. Well, that number's a lot higher now, I assure you. 39,000, Lynn. The closest, even bigger department is the police department, and they're only 17.
Right. Well, that's like I said, we deal with sick people. We have sick people that come to work because they're scared to call in sick. We got, we had like three guys this year recently that came to work with the flu and got other people sick.
I'm, I'm...
It's just, it's the facts.
Well, the facts are 39,000.
Our jobs inherently, we have to deal with sick people. We run on 911 medical calls. We run on people, I ran on people in the last month that's had the flu, and the reason they're calling is because they have the flu.
Okay. Anything else?
We're gonna, do you want me to contact you? You contact me on a date where we can sit down with some of the city council members so we can have transparency?
I think that might be a good idea. I think that might be a good idea. How much time do I have left, Mr. Ross?
Mayor, just a reminder, and as you know, we need to notify the press when you include the...
Absolutely, I want them there. I even want TV cameras. Let's get our new system hooked up so we can broadcast it into the homes and let everybody know exactly what I'm trying to do and trying to give you guys.
Absolutely.
If they think that I'm being unfair, and if these council members think I'm being unfair, they can certainly tell me.
Yes, and we want to go on record that we're not trying to reduce any other city employee's benefits. We just want what everybody else has got. We're tired of being second-rate employees.
Okay. We'll set something up, we'll bring everybody, and I think that all your firefighters are gonna really, really be disappointed in airing all this stuff out in public. I think that needs to be enclosed doors behind me and with me and you. If we can't work it out, then we just say we cry. Yeah, you hadn't had contract figures anyway, so what difference does it make?
We can do that, too.
You're getting paid.
Yeah, we can do that, too. Me and you can get together in your office one-on-one.
I'm afraid we'd need somebody there.
I'm sorry?
I think we'd need somebody there, number one, to take notes.
Well, we've had that in the last few meetings.
Yeah, and it's worked. It's worked. Now, Ms. Ross?
If we do have this meeting, could, I don't know if Ms. Carr, Human Resources, if somebody could prepare for us, all the benefits for the firemen, all the benefits for the police, and for all the non-union so that we can compare? I know that all jobs don't compare, but, you know, I'm hearing that, you know, you're not getting the same thing as the non-uniform. So, if we could have that, benefits, everything included, total package of what the different departments and...
Well, it...
I know that's complicated to do, but if we just had some comparison.
It's very difficult to do.
Right.
But we can do it. Absolutely, we can do it.
Okay.
You know, but at the same time, I think that would be a good drill. Let's do that, Karen.
I know it's not apples to oranges, but you can kind of get, you can still, I mean, you know what, you can look and see.
I mean, you guys are a different breed of cat. Police is a different breed of cat.
Right.
Non-uniform's a different breed. You know, electric company, those guys have got a very dangerous job, and, but everybody's different. And you can't say, I want what everybody else has got, and nobody can have what I've got. And you guys, you just won't get that in your head for some reason. And, you know, I don't get it. I don't understand why you won't agree to what we've thrown out there. It's a, you know, we lose one firefighter a year, one a year, because you've got such a great job and you get great benefits, you know? I lose 12 or 15 police officers every year. So, I have, you know, I have to, they have to have benefits, too.
Oh, we just lost two this month.
Okay, well, wow, we lost two instead of one, you know, so...
Right, right.
You know, I mean, those, that goes back for years, Lynn, and you know that. We don't have any turnover. If it was so bad at the fire department, we'd have a lot more turnover, I assure you.
Yeah.
It's a pretty good deal.
Well, I mean, and you also have to look at applicants. You know, year before last, we had 300, and this last time, we had like 30.
There's no, they realize there's only replacement for one. You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be one of 300 applying for one job unless I'm a super fireman from another department.
Well, yeah, I mean, if this was, yeah, if the benefits were better, maybe we could get more.
I don't want more. We got plenty. We have plenty. We have 160 firefighters. 160.
Well, probably more, 158 now.
Probably more than any other city our size.
Right. And I think actually by the quota ordinance, we're supposed to have 166, so we're down eight right now, eight firefighters.
Okay, well, you know, y'all, this is exactly how these meetings go every time we get together, and it's absolutely the most frustrating thing I've ever done in my life. I used to think having an animal control was the worst thing, but I think trying to negotiate with you is probably the worst of anything I've done in 30 years. And I'm just, I'm about done. I mean, it's affecting my health. I'm not sleeping at night because I wake up in the middle of the night trying to figure out what's going on, and so I'm about done, and I just soon not have a contract. Let's just go, you know, for the next three, three years without...
I and my, I and my members of the negotiating committee are in the same boat.
Okay, well, we're hurting above our health, then.
They miss time with their family, they lose sleep. We're all losing sleep over it.
Let's quit it. Take my offer and be done with it. It's a good offer, Lynn. Okay, what else? Can't lose money. You're not losing money. Ms. Ginn?
If we do have the meeting, I sure wish we could have a list...
Is your mic on?
Thanks, ma'am, I can't hear you.
I'll just scoot up a little bit. I wish we could have a list of what the firefighters want and what the city wants. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And then if he says no on this, say what would you say yes on this? You know, if we could just have a list of what the firefighters are really wanting and what the city really wants. And then during the negotiations, we can say, take a good balance, this one versus this one, you know? I'll give on this side if you give on this side, and maybe negotiations will be a little more comfortable.
Wouldn't do that.
You know? Do you have a list of what the city wants?
Yeah, did you not get that? At one time, we responded on what we'd done, and they countered and said, no, you didn't, blah, blah, blah.
Well, we can condense it down, we can condense it down to five or six things.
That would be nice. You know, maybe during a meeting, you could use those main points to negotiate with, you know? We give if they give, you know?
I've given a lot.
I know, I know.
Okay, Lynn, thank you. Any, Mayor, any city council members? Did y'all get a copy of this? Or was I supposed to pass these out?
Yes.
You got a copy? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Ross.
I forgot, oh. No, I was gonna say, when we're doing all these yes, 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 yeses, that was 240 yeses. I wish you'd timed that, how many yeses we did, 240 yeses.
Yeah, no kidding.
Get an award for roll call.
Right.
Yeah.
You got 240 yeses.
Mr. Height?
I got, I got four things I want to briefly visit about. One of them is, I met with, and I think all of the council members are gonna eventually meet with Charles Frazier, our executive director at Rock Region Metro. I met with him today. I'm excited about having him at the wheel, whatever, running that, running our Rock Region Metro. One thing I did pull out of our meeting today is utilization or ridership on the trolley is up 300%.
Free.
And they're getting, and they're getting sponsorships from local businesses that when the trolley driver goes down the tracks, he puts in a plug for local businesses, and they're raising funds doing that way, which is, anyway, that's the first thing I have.
Okay.
The second thing is, is I don't think he's watching, and he doesn't know that I'm gonna do this, but my friend, or our friend Val at the Central Arkansas Water, every time I've called him in the last eight, 10 years, about a situation, doing with one of our customers, he's jumped right on it. And last week is no different. I had a resident out on Remount Road call me and complain about his water bill and his meter and everything, and I called Val, and Val got right on it and got it straight, and the gentleman's even gonna get a credit on his water bill for the next month or so. And, but I just want to give kudos and thank yous, and I had a boy, Mr. Val, our friend at the water company, that anytime I've called him, he's, he's been a hero for us. The next thing I wanted to visit about, and Sean, where did Sean, did Sean leave?
He just walked out.
Anyway, Sean, I appreciate this. I don't know how many of my fellow council members have asked me about that piece of property up at the corner of Hickory and McCain.
There's a new property owner.
Everybody, I think, I know that council member Baxter has asked me about it a couple of times, and y'all have asked me about it. Well, today I got a phone call from a gentleman that wanted a sidewalk waiver on Hickory. It seems that a gentleman from Little Rock has purchased that piece of property along with the two pieces of property next door to it, and when he asked me, he told me what the location was, I said, before I sign a sidewalk waiver, I'm only commitment out of you that you're gonna get that building finished. Little boy, he said he's gonna do that. In fact, he's gonna build two other pieces of property next door to that house on the corner of Hickory. So, good news I got, when he called me about a sidewalk waiver, I jumped right on it, and so that piece of property on the corner of Hickory and McCain is gonna be brought up to snuff, and they're gonna fix it and sell it or whatever, and he's gonna build two single-family dwellings next door to it on the property.
What's he gonna do about the driveway?
They're gonna, they're gonna relocate the driveway, and they're gonna come up from the side rather than going straight up. And I talked to him about that. He's gonna put in a wall or something down there, but anyway, so he's gonna...
They're not gonna use the garage that's there now. They'll close that in and build a garage on the side and enter from the side.
Anything else?
Yes.
No.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
I don't know how many of my fellow council members, including my new seatmate here, Ms. Ginn, have gotten phone calls about what we're doing on McCain Boulevard. But have y'all gotten phone calls about it? I've got, I've gotten some phone calls from your constituents. I'm getting phone calls from my constituents. I'm getting phone calls from people that live in Levy that utilize McCain Boulevard, wanting to know what, why, whatever. And I told them that I think, I think that we have a plan in place that we're gonna replace some trees, or we're gonna fix the planters and so forth and so forth, and I've promised several of them that as soon as I can find out what that plan is, I'm gonna relay it to them. And so, I just wanted to let you know, Mayor, that I'm needing a plan up there, so, you know, we need to do something to calm the residents down up in that area up there. Some of them are your friends, too, that have called me.
Well, I'm always, you know, the buck stops here, but I've thrown y'all under the bus on that one. I'll just say, man, that's a Ward 4 to Ward 1 project, but the trees were bad, they needed to come down.
I know that, I know that, but...
I think, aren't you working on something, Debbie, with the street department?
Nothing right now. We don't have anything. You know, we had a plan at one time, and then it's, you get that many people involved, you never can get everybody together.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna take out those planters is what I thought.
We need to, we need to, we need to, we need to get our heads together. We need to get our heads together and come up with something up there.
I'm in, I'm in.
Okay, good.
I'll try to fix y'all's problem.
I just don't want one of us to get lynched.
We have a problem in Ward 2, and it's probably all over the city, with landlords, when they evict or someone move out, and they pile all this trash and stuff on the street, and it may sit out there four or five days, and the people in my ward are sick of it. So, I don't know if we have anything on the books, you know, but if we do have something on the books, we need to enforce it. But the neighborhood meetings that I've attended this past week, they're complaining about move out when landlords evict people or people move out and leave a house full of stuff. They said on one street, they had looked like maybe three rooms, living room, dining room, bedroom, and then when the wind blows, it blows that trash all the way to, you know, their place. So, Amy, you know, if you check to see what we have in place, and with the landlords, I'll say this and I'll be quiet, that is a business. It's not like people that, uh, homeowners and stuff. And I know we don't wanna discriminate, but that is a business, and we need something in place to take care of that. Thank you. And I'll call you, I'll get with you on that, you know I will.
I know you will. I'll be ready.
Ms. Ross?
Uh, to follow up on this, uh, the McCain medians, which, you know, it is Ward One and it is Ward Four, I don't know if we want to, like, maybe if you want to sit down in just a couple, but we've just had so many people involved lately, we never can get anything done. So if you wanna just appoint somebody from each ward or whatever, or volunteers from each ward just to sit down to go with it, get the street department in there, and then also, it's gonna be the funding too, so we're gonna need, you know, the funds for it. So, we, that's, that's what needs to be done right now, we're going in circles on it.
White?
And we have had drawings done in the past, whether they're still relevant or whatever, I don't know, but, I mean, we've had this done, this was, wow, this was like five, six years, seven years ago?
Well, I think, I think there's a, there probably may be a simple solution to what we need to do up there, and we just, you know, we need to get somebody, sit down with somebody that...
They do it.
That knows what they're doing and, and makes, give us some options, give us some recommendations as, and, you know, but, leaving, you know, I, we need to come up with a plan though. I mean, until we get a plan, I'm still, y'all gonna get phone calls and we're gonna get phone calls, and, and, uh, we just, we need to...
Can I, can I say one more thing? And I had, there was one comment I had, I can't think it was an email or, or phone call, but, uh, one resident said, could we make it look nice until we decide what we're gonna do? And that is a good comment, you know, the, maybe better grass on that area, or what, I mean, I don't know, but he, they just said, if we don't know what we're gonna do, at least make, make it look nice in the meantime. And there is something for that, like North Hills is just grass, you know, we took all those trees out, and, I mean...
Okay, I mean, I agree.
Green.
I mean, remember, it's...
Oh, I know, I know.
It's just now spring.
I know.
So, Ms. Ross?
Uh, one of the things, the challenges there too, is there's no sprinklers, there's no water there, and it's, I mean, there's no way we can get water to it. And so, planting trees this time of year, and going through summer...
Jane said she went over there with a garden.
Going, going through summer, fall is the time to plant trees, but, so, but that doesn't mean that we can't go ahead and do something else right now.
Yeah, and that, that'll dictate the type of vegetation that we put out there too, or trees or whatever, but, uh...
Okay, and I have one more thing, Mayor, since I have the floor. Uh, on the city website, if you go to traffic services and you click on, they, they've posted the traffic count, that's something that they've started doing now, it's very interesting, they've got a small area of Ward One, and, uh, there's, I think there's a little part of Ward Two in there, and you can look at the traffic counts, you know, when you were talking about the traffic, that didn't warrant that, so they're slowly posting those on there now. So it's kinda, it's very interesting to go there and look and see how many cars travel the streets through the city. And they also, a lot of people think that, you know, that it's a city street and it lets you know that that is a state highway, the city's not responsible for it, but it does have their traffic count on there too. So anybody can see it.
Traffic's on top of it. Ms. Ginn?